Okay, it's two.
Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda today, it has Councilmember Rich Pauls, who's doing the invocation today, but he graciously relinquished his time so that I could talk for a few minutes. We had a great loss in our city this past weekend. We lost Ann Boyle. Ann Boyle was former Public Service Commission, former State Democratic Party Chair, and an individual that really looked out for those who had no voice. I think her, in her DNA, was respect for others, and was stalwart in terms of doing the things necessary for those who had limited voices, who did not have the ability to come down and have their voices heard. She was that voice for them. She made a number of changes, especially in the Public Safety Commission, where she had an opportunity where there were individuals who tried to take advantage of the community, and Ann Boyle was not going to stand for that. So, for that, if I could ask you all for a moment of silence, we had a great loss today, this past weekend, and let's keep an hand in our prayers. Thank you all very much.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1935 South 13th Street from GI District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Who to approve?
Moved and seconded to approve item six. There are no lights. Roll call.
Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Items seven to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for property located at 5003 Dodge Street and 106 South 50th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial. B is communications and opposition. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone these properties from R-3 District and GC District to GC District. Item eight, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the ACI-2 overlay district to incorporate these properties into that district. Item nine, an ordinance to prove an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from low-density residential to office commercial for the property located at 106 South 50th Street, and to change the boundary of the Dodge Street and Saddle Creek Road mixed-use area.
Public hearing on agenda items seven through nine are today. I would ask those in attendance who may be wanting to speak on this item that it will be laid over for at least two weeks.
Three.
Three weeks, I'm sorry. Be laid over for at least three weeks. But the public hearing is open for anyone who, for proponents first.
We're going to continue the public hearing today.
Yeah, and we'll continue the public hearing.
If you would, again, my name's Ryan Glenn with Hush Blackwell, 13330 California Street, Suite 200 in Omaha, Nebraska. My understanding is that the matter is going to be laid over for three weeks, and so if the council wishes, I can certainly provide our statement at this time, otherwise I'm happy to do so in three weeks.
Yeah, why don't we wait for the three weeks?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard that would like to be heard today? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard, who would like to be heard today? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think it's the right thing to do, to lay this over for three weeks and continue the public hearing. Maybe just a quick explanation from my point of view of why we're doing that. I know we have some folks here in the neighborhood here as well who are watching this particular issue, as well as the applicant and the business owner. So we talked about it a little this morning, a little bit this morning. This is the Buc-Ee's at 50th and Dodge, and it straddles my district and Councilman Jerem's district. So, a long time and very productive business in the neighborhood that's used by almost everyone in the neighborhood, our families included. We were talking this morning about various nails in the tires and mechanical needs, let alone gas and convenience and car wash that that location provides, being the first store in Omaha of Buc-Ee's, which has grown to be a very successful business, not only in Nebraska but other places too. But then, that, so that, the desire to help that business thrive there, but then also realizing there's been challenges with the immediate neighbors on that site, and the most recent issue being what's before us today, which was denied by Planning Board and has a negative recommendation from the Planning Department in terms of an excess driveway that was built just to the south there to accommodate what is the car wash. So, it would take a supermajority of council members to approve this, but I think the key to this notion, or what at least interests me about it, is rectifying a situation where there wasn't a correct permit taken out in a practical manner, but only doing so if in fact a redevelopment agreement, or I should say a development agreement, not a redevelopment agreement, is adopted to this proposition of a rezoning and future land use element amendment to the master plan. So that was proposed, I know, at the Planning Board, but it's not currently attached to the documents we have before as at City Council here today. So, from my perspective, it's wise to lay this over for three weeks to have, and maybe instruct the Lot Department and the Planning Department to work with the applicant on that redevelopment, redevelopment, the development agreement that's been proposed, which would limit future development at that site, and also commit the applicant and the owner to install some improvements there that address some issues of surrounding neighbors, whether it be drainage or the current fence there that's not really up to par, as well as landscaping and some shading there that would be helpful to the proposition. So, that's why I'm supporting the layover today, and I think once we do have this agreement to form and signed, and then therefore attached to the city documents in three weeks, the council then can make a judgment about what that does or doesn't do to the proposition of approving the zoning at that time. I do see, we have Peter Manhart from the Neighborhood here. I don't know if Peter, since you came down, if you wanted to say anything while you had the opportunity, or do you want to wait for three weeks?
If I'm invited, I guess I have to be invited, right?
It's Peter Manhart, the president of the Neighborhood Association, who I was pointing to. Sorry about that confusion.
Or in three weeks. The public hearing is closed. They called, he called the gentleman back there.
Peter Manhart with the Dundee Memorial Park Neighborhood Association. The board met last night. The board has discussed this item at length at board meetings, past board meetings, the last few board meetings. We have had feedback from multiple neighbors that they have a negative opinion of this development, and I don't know, we as a board really haven't heard from the neighbors as far as what they want to do, but we as a board also see ourselves as many times looked at as a policing entity of some kind. We're literally like a couple of dozen volunteers that meet for the betterment of the neighborhood, and so we see the city attorney and the city council, of course, as we would obviously support anything that they vote on, and we don't see ourselves as a proponent or an opponent. We were an opponent the last time we spoke. Since then, we've had lengthy discussions about this. We, of course, like the idea that the city is working on our behalf to uphold the zoning laws, but we are also of the opinion that, you know, having Steve remove the driveway seems extremely wasteful regardless of who it is that is burdened financially by the removal. We see it as wasteful, but we also don't want to set a precedent going forward, like the city attorney mentioned. We don't want to, we don't want to set a precedent, especially, I mean, where are the advocates of the neighborhood? So, I really, I didn't know whether I wanted to speak today. That's why I was kind of apprehensive, because I really like the neighbors to speak, because we're here to support the neighborhood, and if there are neighbors that have opinions on this, then we want them to be heard. So, and obviously, then, what I can say last night is we had several opinions on this issue. A few people even mentioned, find out what the cost is to remove it and have him, you know, submit to a local charity or a neighborhood charity, but even that sets a precedent going forward, I think. But again, I, you know, we're just, we're just neighbors, just looking out for the neighborhood. We're really not in the, we're not, we're not here to police, police different zoning laws.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thanks, yeah, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. I just saw that you'd come down, so I wanted to give you the chance.
No, thank you.
All right. So, with that, I think what I will do, I don't think it's been moved yet, but I would move the three-week layover to allow the Lot Department and Planning Department to work with the applicant on this development agreement that could therefore commit legally what can be done on this site in the future should the rezoning be approved, but that would be decided then, three weeks from now as well.
So you made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to layover for three weeks. Mr. Jerem.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank Mr. Buchanan for coming down here today personally to show his interest in his original location, and as we discussed before the meeting, this isn't a matter of any personal animus towards him or his business. In fact, I shared earlier that this location is the location where some of those clunkers and jalopies I drove around in law school, starting in 1988, where I went to get my cars fixed, and where I went recently to get a neighbor's tire, another nail pulled out of it. So, it, it's the neighbors who have struck with me a core of neighborhood creep that has me coming down on, I'm comfortable with the layover. I think that the applicant is entitled to his best opportunity to get this thing considered, but in the end of the day, I don't see myself supporting this because of the concerns that I hear from the people about protecting Dundee from that creep, particularly when there's a lot of redevelopment going there right now around you, and there's some who feel even though there's been multifamily residential, and it is residential redevelopment, they're even sensitive about that. So, that's in fairness to you, to be perfectly upfront where I sit on this, I'm happy to wait three, three weeks to vote on this, but I wanted to know where I'm sitting. I would also say, as I said earlier, that when you have this sort of issue, something that could go a long way with the neighbors, if this does in fact pass, would be some sort of consideration for an environmental mitigation plan to at least give consideration that you do care about the urban environment in Dundee in a way that, I mean, others have donated trees to Midtown Tree, Retree, and others have done mini grants to, available to neighborhood associations for environmental cleanups or beautification and things like that. And I know you're a good corporate citizen on other major philanthropy, and you do so in anonymous way, and to the, some of the biggest institutions in the city that do a lot of good, and I thank you for sharing that with me, and that's just the way you prefer to operate, but when there's been a conspicuous encroachment like this, I think a conspicuous restorative effort is something you should consider too. So, that's all I have to say. There's a motion, I think.
Thank you. There are no more license motion, and a second to layover for three weeks. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 10 through 12 were held on January 29th, 2019. Moved and seconded to approve items.
10 to 12.
10 to 12. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 to 12 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 13 through 31 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Can we remove 24?
And, yes, we can remove 24. Do we want to remove 24?
Somebody requesting.
Yes, someone requesting.
Yeah.
To withdraw.
I'd like to request 24 be withdrawn to allow, from consent to allow withdrawal from the agenda per what the applicant wants.
Thank you. So, we're voting on, the motion is for 13 through 23, 25 to 31. Moved and seconded to approve 13 through 23, 25 to 31. Roll call.
Did they close?
Yeah, we did close.
Oh, you did? Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Motion to allow withdrawal of item 24.
Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Motion to allow withdrawal of item 24.
Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 32, an ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to All Pro Towing LLC for vehicle and equipment towing services to be utilized by fleet management for various City of Omaha operations effective for two years.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, name's Nick Meeker, 1021 South 17th Street with All Pro Towing.
Just here to answer any questions?
Yeah, we're just looking for the opportunity to be of assistance to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponent, or does that conclude your statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. Thank you.
Item 33, an ordinance approving the bid from Solinas LLC for the City of Omaha sludge dewandering polymer purchase with an annual estimated cost of $384,000 for a three-year term.
Public hearing on agenda item number 33 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 34, an ordinance approving the contract with Hawkins Construction Company in the amount of $89,611,631 and 40 cents for OPW 52049 for the Saddle Creek Retention Basin Project located at 2520 South 64th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works, Assistant Director of Public Works. Here to answer any questions. I did provide a one-page handout that was to be given to you before this, along with the information you asked for about the MBE/DB program. If you have any other questions, we're here to answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. Thank you.
Item 33, an ordinance approving the bid from Solinas LLC for the City of Omaha sludge dewandering polymer purchase with an annual estimated cost of $384,000 for a three-year term.
Public hearing on agenda item number 33 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 34, an ordinance approving the contract with Hawkins Construction Company in the amount of $89,611,631 and 40 cents for OPW 52049 for the Saddle Creek Retention Basin Project located at 2520 South 64th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works, Assistant Director of Public Works. Here to answer any questions. I did provide a one-page handout that was to be given to you before this, along with the information you asked for about the MBE/DB program. If you have any other questions, we're here to answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Mr. Tyler. This is one of the bigger dollar item projects within the CSO today. Is that correct?
This is the largest single-dollar project that we have put out. Yes, correct.
And, in short, there's some people who want to know what this is, and if, tell me if I misspeak, but as I understand it, the Saddle Creek Water Basin drains generally to the area where it goes to, behind the Baxter Arena and into the Little Papillion Creek. Is that correct?
That's correct. I do have some figures that I can put up here if that would help.
And, as I understand it, that is an area of combined sewage and storm water, correct?
That's correct. There's approximately five square miles of the city drained to this area, and if you look at the overhead, the red dot on the screen that is just right next to the Baxter Arena, that is where overflow is from Saddle Creek, which basically starts up by Benson High School underground, and flows under Saddle Creek Road and then Center Street, drains central Omaha through that. It all ends up here and overflows to the Little Papillion Creek.
And so, this facility is designed to treat the combined sewage that occurs in storm events with rain over a half inch approximately?
Pretty much any rain over about a tenth of an inch overflows at this time. This will take care of those events, except the very, very extreme events that will continue to overflow on a rare occasion. But yes, this will, this will treat chlorinate, disinfect, and get those flows out to the Little Papillion Creek.
And so, how long can, can we anticipate that this project will take?
The construction is scheduled to start sometime this spring, probably around April. It's looking to be a three-to potentially four-year construction time. I believe, I believe it's three years. That's, yeah, three-year construction.
And we're mandated by the consent decree under the Clean Water Act to implement measures like this to clean up our pollution that we've been discharging into the waterways such as the Little Papillion Creek. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our agreement is with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. We recently renegotiated that agreement, so we now have until 2037 to complete the projects to meet the Clean Water Act.
So, we're required to do this. It's a three-year program. It's about $90 million, and at the end of the day, what in terms of zero to 100% success rate do we anticipate in storm events we will have in addressing, cleaning up the water flows?
So, our goal and what our computer models show and the information that we've provided to the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality shows that we will capture over 85% of the combined sewage that is currently flowing to the Little Papillion Creek from this location.
Thank you.
Okay.
The last thing I would say as a comment is, so the public knows in terms of the expenditures, the dollars on this project, that this is an actually redesigned facility from what we had proposed originally from the city to address this issue. The first proposal, the way it was designed, had bids, I think, was it $135 million, Mr. Tyler?
We had a single bid. It was $128 million. We rejected that bid. We went back to the negotiation table with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. We reduced the size of the basin that they were requiring. We did a lot of value engineering, working directly with contractors and hired a value engineer, and came up with a much smaller scope of a project that we were able to get for $89 million.
So, for those who have concerns about the CSO and the large-scale spending in terms of what the city's programs are, I thought it was important to mention that because the extraordinary efforts that you've gone through in the department with our consulting engineers to come up with a solution that has the success percentage rates built into it that this does for the dollars that the city taxpayers are spending on this to pay for the project. We're achieving cleaner water that is going to be measured tangibly to demonstrate that we are achieving that success, and it's done in a way that is as efficient as we can be with the precious dollars and cents that we're given. So I wanted to share a little bit about that because of the scope of this, of this project and what we're spending. Did you have anything you want to add, Mr. Tyler?
I think the only thing I want to add is, I think sometimes, okay. I think the only thing that I'd want to add, I think sometimes there's this misconception that we're bending over backwards to spend money to meet the requirements that are in front of us, and I, I look at that as just the opposite. We're not going to spend a dime if we don't have to. You know, these are, these are the public's funds. We watch over those funds very closely, and we see that as the most important part of our job.
Thank you.
Mr. Tyler, just one, just one question for me, just before you leave. We, I see we've got the subcontractors here listed and so forth. Have we done, have we worked with the Human Rights and Relations Department to verify that these are really some of our, are they part of our SEB program?
You know, I'm not sure if they're on the SEB program itself. They met the qualifications of the federal MBE/DB program, because there are federal funds on this project, so that supersedes. But we were working very closely with HRNR as well as the federal programs all through this process to try to make sure, especially because we had a lot of out-of-town contractors involved with this, to make sure that we were getting not only involvement on the winning bid, but from the non-winning bids and the out-of-town contractors, we were making sure that they understood the pool of available small businesses locally, and we worked very hard on that part of the project.
Okay. Of the five I see here, are any of them from out of town? Are they all local contractors? Because a couple of them I'm not aware of.
That's going to be one. I'll have to follow up and get that information for you.
Okay, if you would, please.
I will.
I'd like to know how many of them are from out of town.
Yeah, I'll get that, please.
Thank you. Do you know, Tom?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Could I just mention?
Sure. Name and address for the record, Tom.
Thank you. Tom Heineman with Jacobs Engineering and the Program Management Team, 210 South 16th Street. I just want to reiterate a couple of things. First of all, we consider this a real success story, working the Program Management Team, the city, Wade Trim, the designer, working together to get this cost down to where it was affordable. But one comment I wanted to make is that we're, one, another thing we're very excited about is the low bidder, is Hawkins Construction locally here, and the timing for them actually worked out quite well. One project was mentioned this morning that they've been quite successful on, but also another CSO project, they're going to be finishing up their work out at the Missouri River Water Resource Recovery Facility about the time this starts. So, we're going to be able to get kind of their A-team from that project over to the Saddle Creek project. So, we're really excited about the project, think it's going to be high quality. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 35, an ordinance approving an interlocal agreement with Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District with cost share amount not to exceed $780,000 for the urban drainage
are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for the removal and/or trimming of trees, bushes, shrubs, hedges, and any other vegetation on certain lots in the City of Omaha, group number 2019-05.
Public hearing agenda item number 40 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 41, an ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning employment classifications, by adding the Education and Community Outreach Coordinator, Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Begley, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. What, I'm sorry, what are you going to do?
What department?
What department?
Human Rights and Relations.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
The position or me?
The position.
HR.
Human Rights and Relations is the position?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 42, an ordinance to approve and execute an agreement with De March and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $43,333 annually to provide for an investment manager search and additional advisory services for the City of Omaha's Investment Management Committee for a period of three years.
Public hearing agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item 43, motion by Councilmember Pauls to reconsider Resolution 2019-81 to award bids in the estimated amount of $450,000 for emergency pothole repair services to be utilized by the Street Maintenance Division.
Next week.
And the vote, yep, the vote will occur on February 12.
Next item.
Non-action items, items 44 through 63, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda.
I'm sorry. Did I get past you? Okay, go ahead.
Oh, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Mr. Harding?
I can do it now, but I was just going to ask for a moment if you'd indulge me to go completely off the reservation for a minute and wish Emily Noor a happy retirement. This is her last meeting with the city council today.
So we get to revoke her press pass today?
Yeah.
We get to get?
She's the last one to not require a pass, right?
Yeah, she's the last one. Everybody else gets a pass from now on. Yeah. We instituted that. That was a secret vote. No, we're just kidding.
Just let people know she is.
Yeah, just so people don't, just for, for our, for our audience, and, and thank you, Mr. Harding, but for our audience that may be listening in, Emily is the beat reporter for City Hall at the, at the Omaha World Herald. And she's leaving to pursue other issues, I guess. So thank you for the work that you have done. Thank you for, you know, continuing to do what you could to keep us on our toes. Thank you for.
I was going back and reviewing your tweet back for the council.
Yeah. So thank you and good luck. That is their motion adjourned. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:33.